He was walking through the door, somebody in chat. Whatever they would have walked in the door, turned and walked back out.
Alright. Meeting ID on the agenda is incorrect. Unable to sign in.
Just so you know, I was unable to sign in using the ID on the, uh, meeting ID on the agenda. The only way I could sign in is the link on, uh, online.
It'd be the same one, isn't it?
It is not.
Okay.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thanks, Ralph.
Anyways. Seeing as I was six thirty-one, I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. For August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM. Actually, it's six thirty-one PM, if you join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, we did one and two approval of minutes. So I hear a motion to approve the minutes of August fourth.
I, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of August fourth. And just note that there is an attachment to the minutes that was, uh, I believe attached to be a clarification of what Stephanie Summers will speak about. Wait here a second. Oh, I'm meeting this. Yes, I'll say, okay, I'll give you a minute to read it. Thank you. I, I've forgotten about red. Alright, so, um, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any further, um, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. That's unanimous. Moving on, present to speak. Uh, public participation has occurred. Speakers are limited by appropriateness. Stay on topic and maintaining decorum. Time may be limited to maintain progress. Please request to reserve time during the meeting if you wish to speak to a specific item. Is there anybody online that would wish to speak? I see a hand. Is that hand us or no, that's not? Jim, do you have anything to say? We're in public to speak. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, muted. Now I'm muted. Alright, okay. Correspondence.
We had some correspondence.
The correspondence is under, um, good and welfare. The library.
Alright. Um. I think I'm gonna wait till good and welfare on that one.
That's what he wanted it.
Alright, um. I don't know. I think this goes with this. And that goes with that.
There were some stuff in there already. I just left it.
Right. Perfect. Actually, oh man, that's not in this meeting. Okay. We have no, uh, correspondence except for under good and welfare. We'll do that under good and welfare. Uh, Public Works report. The Public Works has been, uh, uh, they're redoing the Memorial Hall School field uh, with the new Harley rake that they just acquired. It's already paid off for that project. I don't know if you've ever seen a Harley rake. They're, they're very cool. They're very cool. They tear up everything and then smooth it all back out without the rocks. They're also getting, uh, soil samples to make sure that they put in the right kind of sod. Uh, they're mowing the sides of the roads. Um. They repaired the concrete on the handicap ramp at Hall School. Um. They paved the roadside edges where there was washouts. They been, I believe, up in the area of Villa Hill Road. Uh, they've been picking up wood from the, uh, it saves us considerable amounts of money when the tree contractor comes in and knocks down trees for us. Our Public Works picks up the, the wood afterwards. Uh, we also will leave it for the, the homeowners that wish to keep it for their fire, uh, for their furnaces and fireplaces. Uh. They've been, uh, picking up brush from storm damaged trees. Uh, they're mowing sightlines and retention ponds. Then installed new signs up at the intersection of Old Farms and Seventy-four for the Senior Center. They're very much nicer and you can actually read them now. Uh, they've been doing vehicle repair and maintenance. Routine, uh, garage cleanup and, uh, the, uh, cleaning contractor for the catch basins has been around. They were quite loud outside the, uh, uh, town hall the other day, in the town office building. Um. For a selectman's status report. Uh, first, I'd like to report that, uh, we had uh, insurance for our volunteers in case they were hurt. Uh. Unfortunately, the notifications for renewals were going to two people that were no longer employed here. So we didn't get the renewal for last year, but I've reinstated that. It's at a cost of four hundred and eighty-five dollars and seven cents. It's something that we've had for several years. We first started it for, um, the storm shelter, yep, uh, volunteers in case they get hurt. So it's important to have. It's important to have. Our town runs on volunteers. We, we cannot live without them. I, I believe we should be ensuring them particularly for that price. Um, the Connecticut DOT is doing uh, friction wear. It's a, it's a coating that they're putting on state roads to improve the, uh, life expectancy of our local, of, of our state roads in town. Uh, from what I understand, it, it also greatly increases the, um, traction that your vehicle will get. Unfortunately, wears out the state plow blades from what I hear from state plow, uh, operators. But, uh, those are state costs, not town costs. For that, we, we are grateful. Uh, they're doing thirty-two, seventy-four, three-twenty and three-twenty. Um. So we look forward to that. They're also replacing a large number of our local traffic signs at the state's expense to, uh, make sure that we have greater reflect. I'm gonna make up a word, reflectivity.
I like it.
I love that word.
Alright, nice. It's, it, we, we will go with that word then. Uh. And other than that, uh, thank God it's August because things are slowing down to a rate where I can keep up.
Good.
Um. So getting on to new business. Oh, first I'd like to, uh, move that we add a uh, item to new business, new business F plow contract. Do I hear a second? Well, so. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Alright. First motion, uh, first, uh, first.
Oh, who?
First item, A, call the town meeting. So, uh, I will read the call and then I will ask for a motion to accept. Uh, Town of Wellington Notice and Warning, Town Meeting. The electors of the Town of Wellington and all persons who are entitled to vote in Town Meeting on matters mentioned in the following warning are hereby warned and notified to meet at the Old Town Hall at eleven Common Road in Wellington on Tuesday, September third, twenty twenty-five at seven PM for the following purposes. Item one. To see if the townspeople on the recommendation of the Board of Finance will appropriate one hundred and three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars from their reserve fund to account number zero four, four zero five. Correction, zero four dash four zero five five for a new roadside mower for Public Works to replace the two thousand nine M and B mower. Item two. To see if the townspeople on the recommendation of the Board of Finance will appropriate ten thousand dollars from LoSiP to account number zero two dash two zero two eight for restroom door operators for the Senior Center. Item three. To see if the townspeople on the recommendation of the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen will change the ordinance regarding personal property leased to the Town of Wellington by deleting the phrase shall encompass the fiscal year July twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen tax building. Item four. To see if the townspeople on the recommendation of the Board of Finance will change the ordinance regarding the town contracts for purchase and sales ordinance, volume five, page two hundred and eighty-two, volume seven, page fourteen, to change the price, the phrase quote, the price of which is in excess of five thousand dollars shall not be made until such time as the Board of Selectmen has sought competitive bids for the same to the price of, of which shall not is not in excess of twenty thousand dollars. Item five. To see if the townspeople on the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen will change the ordinance regarding veterans exemption volume six, page one fifty-one by changing the phrase shown on the schedule heretofu attached and incorporated herein shall be adjusted annually in a in a uniform manner to reflect the annual inflation adjustment on social security income as determined by the Secretary of the Office of Policy and Management pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section twelve dash one seventy AA sub paragraph B, sub paragraph two, to quote, shown on the schedule and made available in the Wellington Office of the Assessor shall be adjusted annually in a uniform manner to reflect the annual inflation adjustment in social security income as determined by the Secretary of the Office of Policy and Management pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section twelve dash one seventy AA subsection B, subsection two. Item six. To see if the townspeople on the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen will repeal the ordinance regarding the Solid Waste Advisory Commission, volume seven, page nine. Section one, there is hereby created a commission to consist of five members and two alternates as hereafter set forth to be known as the Solid Waste Advisory Commission of the Town of Wellington. Hereafter referred to as the Commission. Section two, said commission shall consist of five members and two alternates, all of whom shall be residents of the Town of Wellington at least eighteen years of age and one of whom shall be a member of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Wellington. The above said members and alternates shall be appointed by the majority vote of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Wellington. Section three, the terms of the members of said commission shall be staggered as follows. Three of the regular members shall be appointed to two-year terms and simultaneously, two, two regular members of said commission shall be appointed to three-year terms. One of the alternate members shall be appointed to a two-year term and the other alternate member shall be simultaneously be appointed to a three-year term. Section four, the commission shall meet at least six times annually in accordance with the schedule to be established. Section five, the commission shall review the operation of the town transfer station monitor its status and all developments affecting the same and should develop a long-term plan for the operation of the said transfer station. The commission shall issue recommendations to the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Wellington as it may deem necessary or appropriate to ensure the proper management of the town transfer station. Section six, the commission shall, whenever it seems appropriate or necessary, draft and submit regulations governing, governing the operation of the town transfer station to the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Wellington for its consideration of the management of the transfer station. Fifty, section seven. At all times, the commission shall operate and propose ordinances and regulations which are consistent with any state, federal regulations governing the disposal of solid and or hazardous waste. Section eight, annually, the commission may submit a budget to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance of the Town of Wellington. The budget for said commission shall include items, line items which are separate from any proposed budget submitted to the Board of Finance by the Board of Selectmen in the Town of Willing, of the Town of Wellington. Section nine, this ordinance shall become effective fifteen days after publication in newspaper pursuant to the provisions of section seven, one dash one fifty-seven of the General Statutes of the State of Connecticut.
That's a multiple. So you read into the entire call?
I read into the, the, the ordinance and the entire ordinance into the call as we are looking to repeal the ordinance. I wanted, I wanted the town to be aware of what's in it. And, um. So do I hear a motion to, to, uh, I'll make a motion to accept, um, the, um, to, to, uh, move the call, move the call. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I second that.
Alright, this, what?
September second. Tuesday, September second.
We need to retype this and this is September third. I thought it was, I I thought it was Wednesday. It has to be Wednesday, September third.
Okay, then that's correct.
Yeah, September third is correct. We have to change Tuesday to Wednesday.
Alright, I'll retype it.
Um. Yeah, because the second, we have a Board of Selectmen meeting. Alright.
Do you want me to go fix that now and bring it down?
Uh, if you would, and, uh, yeah, and, uh, so discuss while she is making impressions to the type of copy. Um. Discussions, item three, I think we went through all of this weeks ago.
We did. We went through it all two weeks ago. We specified that we're gonna be, you know, removing the Solid Waste Advisory Committee.
Yeah. Then, um, due to the fact that, uh, mid near rock and the state have taken over all the expansions of that.
And it's been dormant for several years.
And it's been dormant for several years. Um. The twenty thousand dollar limit for changing it from five thousand to twenty thousand dollars for bids generally follows the rate of inflation from when we, it was set for five thousand. Also, twenty thousand is the uh, number which, for which we have to go to town meeting anyways, brother. And we're finding that most contracts under twenty thousand dollars, we can only get one bid. So what it's essentially doing is putting us six weeks behind. And, uh, things are moving slow enough as they are. Um. Anything else we want to discuss? Um. No, I, I think. Most of, most of these, uh, most of these changes were, uh, at the suggestion of the state of Connecticut.
Yeah, other than the mower and the doors, everything was, has already been discussed.
Right. And, uh, the mower and the doors were both, uh, uh, CIP items, I believe. They were in the CIP plan, so. So we, we, uh, yeah, so. I, you gave me a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That makes it unanimous. Uh. Housing Authority reappointment.
Who wants to do that?
I don't have a letter for that, I don't believe. Anyways, Arthur Blakely would like to be reappointed to the Housing Authority. Do we have anybody from the Housing Authority online?
Is it, was his request to be on?
Uh, I believe his request was to be on it.
Okay.
And that the Housing Authority has asked that he be reappointed.
Been on it before.
And he's been on it before. So do I hear a motion to, uh, reappoint?
I, I make a motion that we reappoint Arthur Blakely to the Housing Authority for his request and the Housing Authority has endorsed.
I'm gonna suggest we table this because we don't have a, uh, term. Well.
Yeah, I guess we're supposed to have a term.
We, we have to have a term.
Alright, Brian was wrong in motion.
Okay, we will do that at the next meeting. Proposed code adoption ordinance. Um. That's on my desk. Anyways. So, oh, the um. Building Department has requested that we change, that we, uh, propose an ordinance, uh, so that they can change some of the codes, building codes. Uh, this is the, uh, ordinance which allows them, would allow them to do some of that. We need to be caught up on that. Are you aware of this, Andy?
I, no, not, not the, not the way you're saying it, uh, but, uh, guitar.
Well, I, what I, what I wanted to do is I wanted to put it on, on the, uh, agenda for this meeting so that we could attach the, uh, proposed ordinance to the minutes so that townspeople would have a chance to, uh,
So that everybody could review it.
Can review it and that.
Pick it up next meeting.
Take it up next meeting. So I don't think we need a motion on that one. Um. Reappoint the Economic Development Commission members. So. Uh, we have a number of Economic Development Commission members whose, uh, uh, appointments have expired. So I would like to, we have checked with these people and they would like to be reappointed. Uh, Mike Johansson, was he always a member?
Mike is, Mike has been a member, um,
Okay.
Contractor in town, was a great job. He's also a member of Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, because I didn't have him on this original list, so.
Yeah.
Um, in terms for that either. I do.
You do.
I have terms for that.
Alright.
Um. So. I would like to nominate Mike Johansson for a term running from eight nineteen, twenty, um, twenty-five to eight one twenty thirty.
Mike, is it, can I just point one?
Yeah.
Can, if, I'm, I'm on that commission. I'm in from chairman of the commission. Should I be voting on these or should I be voting on these? I don't know.
You know what I'm thinking here? And this is my thought, is that you are one of the members to be reappointed.
Yeah.
I, I would suggest that you abstain on that vote.
Yeah.
But nobody knows more about these other people than you, so.
Yeah, they're wonderful folks. So, okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. So, yeah, I'll make a motion to be accepted. Well, you're making a motion.
I made a motion.
Second that motion.
Alright. Uh, any other discussion on Mike?
Mike has done a wonderful job. He's a valuable asset, um, you know, um, and works very hard at it, um, so.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to nominate Matthew Clark for a five-year term. Uh, beginning eight nineteen, twenty twenty-five and ending eight one twenty thirty.
I second that. Abstain.
Alright, so, uh, Matt has been the, uh, the interim, uh, chair of that and has been shepherding the, uh, Economic Development, uh, report and so I strongly suggest we reappoint him.
And so, uh, it's just me and you, buddy. Any others?
How many people are on, just how many people are on that committee? Uh.
And we're looking at three of them right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually.
Know the, know the discussion.
Yeah.
And Bill, Bill Rinkin's on here as well.
Yeah, he, he is still good though. So we don't have to reappoint him yet. That'll be next year's problem. Uh, so all those in favor of Matthew, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh. Cheryl Mitchell. Uh. For a term running from eight nineteen, twenty twenty-five to eight one twenty thirty. Uh, I don't know Cheryl, but if you'd like to speak, first, I, if we can get a second.
Oh, yes, I second.
Alright. And then we'll like.
Cheryl also is a valuable member. She's done a wonderful job, um.
She's, she's been on it?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Um.
I can't put a face to it. Yep, so Cheryl actually, um, works in, um, cattle insurance. And she's a, she's got a very good job there. So she's been very helpful to us, goes to all our meetings, participates in our workshops, and has helped out a lot.
Was she a Wellington guy?
Yes, well, I think she was.
I think she was too. I think that's why.
Yeah.
The name's familiar. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous.
Is it inappropriate? Can I, can I bring up, uh, something on this?
Yeah, I, I'd like to bring up one thing and then I, I, I think it would be appropriate and I'd like you to bring it up. So first, what I want to say about the Economic Development Commission is that we do have I believe, uh, three vacancies for alternates. Uh, and so I would encourage anybody from town who is interested to please join the Economic Development Commission. Uh, if you, if you want to express your interest, please leave a note at my office.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to make a two, uh, a couple of, of observations.
Yeah.
Not noting, uh, but having to do with economic development. Um, tomorrow, uh, we'll be presenting, uh, the Economic Development Commission will be, uh, working with Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, sharing, uh, the, uh, strategic plan for economic development for Wellington. We've developed a bunch list or a list of actions that we want to take. I look forward to sharing, uh, with Planning and Zoning tomorrow and, um, working together to, 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 you know, to shepherd that through as a work. Uh, the second thing is, um, you're in our last conversation, um, or our last meeting, which is a couple of days ago. Uh, we, um, um, had a discussion, very good discussion on economic development in, in, in Wellington. We went over our a lot to do with the purpose here, which is, which is balancing the, uh, tax burden amongst residential and commercial businesses. Um, yeah, looking to promote reasonable, responsible, reasonable development as fits the character of, of Wellington. Um, as part of that discussion, um, conservation and, um, one of the members of the Conservation, uh, Commission was, was in attendance. They talked about the, uh, the property, the FedEx property up there, um, it's all its own commercial. So associated or next door to that is, I think, um, commercial zone property as well, so.
But from what excavation?
Yeah. And in there? And.
There, there's the property and then there's a conservation easement that forms a C shape around it.
Yeah.
So that it can't expand and then there is commercial property around the easement.
Yeah. So we're gonna look at maybe possibly, um, you know, working in, in the future, um, a, uh, potential for moving that conservation easement, um, or, um, uh, uh, helping the Conservation Commission, um, you know, fund additional land purchases, um, so. Kind of work those two out to, to each other. So we have, um, you know, appropriate development in the commercial area. And also addition to our conservation land, so. That, I mean, all of you would, that, yeah, makes sense, right?
Yes, there's some repeat. Yeah. Uh, see if we can, uh, work, work together, together, to make sure that our commercials is working most efficiently without and, and perhaps even improving our, our conservation.
Yeah.
And open space land.
Right.
Okay. Um. Youth Advisory Committee discussion. Uh, it was brought to my attention by the town clerk that, uh, oh, this was on the wrong thing. I'm gonna have to go back to that. Um. That we had a youth, that, that the town has a youth, uh, Services Advisory Board. The main reason for the board, as I found out today, is that you must have a Youth Services Advisory Board for some of our grants from the state.
Absolutely.
It's a, well, you have to have one. So. Yeah. I was going to suggest that we, what?
Do we have one right now?
What we have now is, uh. It was formed in uh April, on April twentieth twenty fifteen by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Uh, it, the last list we have. Has. Uh, the the last person to expire expired in twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
So we've had no. Uh, current, no appointed member since. Uh, April of twenty twenty-two. And, uh, the last meeting was ten fifteen twenty twenty-one. I believe that this may have been. A victim of COVID. Um. There is no ordinance. Founding this committee. And, uh. What is happening and and why I am suggesting that we. Leave this alone right now.
Yeah.
Is that. Our Human Services Department is working in conjunction with Ashford, um. To form a regional committee. Uh. Which will. Solve our statutory problem.
It's okay if it's regional.
It's okay if it's regional. And that way we will have a greater number of people to pick from. We have never had a a police representation, and we've never had a library representation, which are required by statute. We had a waiver on the police representation, seeing as how we had.
No police.
No police department. I believe that we could have of gotten. Filled that that mandate with. We've got a lot of cops that live in town.
Okay, all right.
So, uh, we should, we should be reaching out to some of them, but we'll see what we can do with that. Uh, it was a learning experience for me to find out that that was the reason why we haven't.
So that'll probably be coming up on the future agenda then, right?
Future agenda, probably within the next six weeks, I am sincerely hoping. Um. So that's that discussion. Plow contract. Like I said during the discussion of the. Uh, town warning. Uh, discussion. Um. On bids. We, uh. Put out for bid for uh snowplow contractors. We need a a an additional truck. There's a number of ways to accomplish this, and. We discussed some of them during last budget season, and we decided to. Continue getting a contractor as long as we could get a contractor. We had one bid, so we've accepted that bid. Uh, Larry Kutchko of seventy-four Kutchko Road, um. Provided his uh bid. Uh, to for one truck at an hourly rate of a hundred and ninety-five dollars, which I believe. Is about seventy dollars an hour cheaper than the state is paying for that right now. Uh, so the price is very good, I believe. It's a one-year bid twenty for this year. And, uh. So. I move that we accept the bid from Larry.
He's been the only bidder for the last few years, right?
Yes.
Because we went to hourly wage, we didn't want to do a. Annual.
Yeah.
Contract.
And and we're asking these contractors to maintain their own own equipment.
And then he's got all the insurance and certificate assurance and the drug alcohol testing and all that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Again. We are in agreement. Moving on to old business. Uh, oh. I have one new, uh, one more item under new business. I'm sorry, I I. I'd like to move that we include a item G EFG.
See, I know my alphabet. That's very good.
Yeah, uh, school, uh, school, uh, building.
While you're second, I'll second that much.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so this is a very short discussion. I don't believe we will have a motion to do anything on this right now, but it 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 appears that, um. Our our state representative, uh, Representative Tammy Nuccio has been working quite hard in the legislature. To provide some funding for. Is a new school project. Whether that be a renovation or a new school or whatever. Whenever you build a new school, you must have a school building committee. So.
State statutes tell you what the composition.
What the composition is, and it must include at least one construction, uh. Uh, expert.
Yeah.
Uh, so. What I'd like to do is 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 we until. Let me form a real sentence. September fourth, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance and the Board of Education are 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 meeting together. To find a way forward.
And that'll be held in the.
And the, uh. In the library basement, right, correct?
That'll be held in in Hall School Library.
Hall School Library. Thank you.
It's okay.
I I missed, I missed that second one.
That's what I thought.
All right. This will be, it, the time and date will be. The date, the time and place will be published.
Yeah.
Uh. Before that meeting by one or most of those committees. Uh, to discuss how to go forward. But because we're gonna need a committee, I'd like people. In town. Uh, mostly. I'd like some non-elected citizens of town. Who consider joining this committee. Uh, will be taking applications for. Uh. Committee members. I would very much like this to be a bipartisan, uh. Committee of a cross-section of our town. I think that. Uh, what we've discovered is that buy-in. For the committee findings are extremely important. And we've got a, what I think is a pretty good opportunity here, at a rather high reimbursement rate from the state. So what we need to do is we need to figure out a way that the town can afford it. And then we get a school that our children can learn in. And that we can. It it's a number of balancing, uh. We have, we have. Variables, and and I think it's gonna take a a committed committee. With the interests of the total town in mind.
Committed committee, really?
Okay, hey.
All right, all right.
I'm a poet.
I know.
I have to let my my, uh.
Words flow, good, so, um, uh, so that that school building committee is is something that will be on on the agenda moving forward.
Yes, it will, and I believe that we have a meeting before that, uh. September fourth meeting, which I would like to, uh. Where am I, September fourth is Thursday, so we will be meeting on Tuesday, the second. The town meeting is on Wednesday, the third. The school board meeting is on Thursday, the fourth. What's the second? I will be taking one of those, uh, what's Tuesday, the second? Or it's like. Uh, the first is Labor Day. Oh, I remember, so, okay, that's why we're having it on the second.
Yeah, I got it.
And after that, I think I'm gonna take a grippy socks vacation. Okay. Moving on to old business. Tax stabilization plan. And so Matt, you've been spearheading this, so I'd like, this is another. Uh, topic along with our, uh. Uh. The. Proposed uh code adoption ordinance. Uh, that I I'm putting out now, we will have a much more intense. Detailed discussion of it at a later time, but I wanted both these plans to be attached to the meeting minutes tonight. So that people would have a chance to catch up.
So I've had, I've had several meetings with the lawyers, um. In regards to an ordinance establishing a tax stabilization program in the town of Wellington. We've discussed this more select meetings before quite a few times. Over the months, um, and, you know, the objective here is to. Um, you know, promote, um, business development, appropriate business development here in Wellington, and give the people, the the Board of Selectmen. The authority to level. Tax payments. So what happens is when you have businesses that have high. Uh, investment in assets, um, that depreciate. Um, what what happens is our tax rate. Or our tax take, if you will, the amount that we get in. Goes down year after year after year after year after year. And the business has to pay high rates in the beginning and low rates at the end. Now, what what tax stabilization does is it takes it and. Moves it equal, so it's equal every single, every single year. You can build in an inflation adjustment, which will be fairly small. But so it provides surety for, um, the town about, uh, even stream of 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 tax payments moving forward. Provides surety for the, um. Um, business, um, because they now get get to know exactly what their tax rates are going to be moving forward. Um, and, um, it also, um, promotes, um, you know, they were, they were able to, um. You know, le- level the taxes. This is not an abatement. Um, and every single penny that 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 tested the business it, uh, owes will be paid. It's just a question of making them equal year over year over year. The, this would be implemented by the assessor, um. And, um, I'll attach the final copy. That I that I went over with the lawyers, um, to the minutes, and we'll have, we'll discuss it next time again, okay?
Excellent, the the other advantage that to this is that. Um, these high depreciation. Uh, items like batteries and solar panels.
Yeah.
Uh, because of revow. We don't have to have a legal battle. At the, every five years with these people on these businesses on on. The depreciation that that's all pre-planned and they can't.
Right.
Also, bring us into court on that, which would cost us money even if we're right.
That's right, and and they bank on that, they bank.
Right. They bank on us.
Giving it.
Giving it, yeah.
Um, and then also, um, you know, it also protects us, if you will, from the fu- future possible eventuality of the state of Connecticut. Saying that, um, intervening on on how much we charge in taxes for energy development programs. So our our contract would take precedence over intervening, um, reductions in what we're charging. That makes sense?
Mm-hmm. Those to me was just amazing. Andy?
Yeah, I know this things are all thinking discussed and, uh.
Yeah.
We'll go over it more in depth, and we have the contracts in front of us.
Yep.
And we can look at it line by line.
Yep.
The, uh. From a business approach, I believe, tax that related to something we'll have to do. I know we mentioned something about, uh. The twenty-five million dollars that was floating around about a business gives us. And about five hundred thousand dollars a year, in fact.
Yeah.
And if you look at modern construction and what it takes, twenty-five million dollars isn't really that much anymore. And if you're, if you're a lending institution. You are probably looking for things like tax stabilization, so you know what what you're lending to. If it's not fluctuating year over year.
And.
And you're capitalizing, and like I said, twenty-five million isn't even that much money now anymore, is that?
You can build it into your model, and now you can have some surety that the business is not necessarily gonna get socked.
Exactly, and I mean, determine whether it's properly capitalized for those payments for the next ten years. It makes sense to me. But again, we need to look at the details before we. Agree to anything.
All right, all right. So, moving along to, uh. Item B. Uh, we had a, uh, open, uh, vacancy. In the revenue collector's office, so we have hired Sierra Snyder. Uh, to be our part-time assistant revenue collector, uh. It was a three-person committee, and Sierra has been been hired. And, uh, she's on a current. Thirty-five, thirty or forty-five day working test period? Ninety, ninety-day working test period, so we wish Sierra all the luck, and we hope that that she is helpful to our tax collector. Um. Good in welfare. Uh. Good welfare. Um. So, two things from the library. Uh. One is that. Uh, we. Would sincerely, sincerely like to thank, uh. Uh. Ca- Kathy Whiskey, uh. Uh, upon her retirement from the library, she served for the town library for fifty years.
Oh, wow.
And she's retiring from the library on September fourth, so I would like. Everyone who knows Kathy to wish her well. Uh, both she and her husband Bob have been doing. A tremendous amount through the years for the town, and, uh. If you'd like to, uh. Join the library staff between the hours of eleven and four P M. Uh, on September fourth. To wish Kathy, uh, well in her retirement.
I didn't read that exactly as Steve wrote it. We'll get there.
Uh. Also from the library director. Uh, starting on August eighteenth, pending weather, all things masonry will be commencing constructions and renovations of their retaining walls. Which were approved through ARPA funding last year. The bid sele- and bid selection over the winter. There'll be a large trailer. Uh, situated near their side lot towards back to minimize impact on parking and store materials and equipment on site. But there will be additional vehicles on site for approximately three to four weeks, starting around eight A M or earlier, depending on the day. And they may work on Sundays too, if it works into their schedule, um. So. Please be mindful if you're going to the library not to get a brick dropped on you. The library is also. I I, they have a two-page press release here, so I am going to. Indents. Uh. The library is is excited to announce it's been awarded a grant for four hundred dollars from the Pilcrow Foundation Children's Book Project. Which was matched by the Friends of Wellington Public Library for two hundred dollars. Providing the library with thirty-three brand-new children's books worth approximately six hundred dollars. Additionally, the library was selected for two sponsored grants through the Pilcrow Foundation for thirty-seven additional titles, bringing the grand total. To seventy new children's books worth over thirteen hundred dollars of retail value. Um. The first additional sponsored grant provided by Mr. Hal Brenson and Ms. Mrs. Laura Ackerman of Colorado added twenty science and math-themed books. Uh, valued at four hundred dollars to the collection. And the second from Doctors Bill Strawbridge and Meg Walhagen of California. Contributed seventeen health and wellness titles for three hundred dollars combined with the original grant. These, uh, generous contributions ensure young patrons in Wellington will have access to high-quality, up-to-date materials on a wide variety of topics. The grant helps us to continue to build a vibrant, that diverse and current collection for our youngest learners. Uh. For Steve Osier. Who is our our Director of Public Libraries and. As a aside, if you have a chance, go meet Steve. He is a. A a a real asset to our town and to our library. Uh. The Friends of Public, Wellington Public Library played a vital role in securing the grant, providing the two hundred dollar match as part of the application. Friends raise these funds through the annual membership dues, investment income, community events, including their annual book sale. Held in May and June, as well as their craft fair and basket raffle held in December. Also made it to the basket raffle sale of December. I, uh, attribute a tremendous amount of my weight problem to that. Um. Good excuse. Yeah, I thought so. See how they slid that in there, linked it all in then? The Friends of Wellington Library are proud to support the growth of the library's collection for children. Said Hannah, uh, Preco, the president of Friends of Willen- uh, Wellington Public Library, these new books will benefit. Children and families of our community for years to come. We cannot wait to see them on the shelves into the hands of young readers. Uh, supporting the library through supplemental resources and funding with matching grant. It's a core part of their work and and reinvesting in members' dollars into the library we love. It's a core part of their work and, and reinvesting in members' dollars into the library we love. Uh. So, this comes from Steve Osier. And, uh, so if you are interested in joining the Friends of the Wellington Public Library, that would be a fine use of time. Um. That got me through that stack, stack of paper. Which brings us back to present the speech. Is there anybody? Oh, uh, Don. You?
We're maybe done.
Good evening. Yes.
Hi, Don.
Hi. I apologize for getting here a little bit late. I see that Art, uh, Blake Lee was
Yes.
uh, on, on the agenda.
Yes.
Was there any questions with regards to his reappointment?
Yes, there were, which is why we didn't report him yet, reappoint him yet, but we can go back to that now that you're here. Can you tell us something about Arthur and his term, uh, when his term would run?
His term is, I'd have to take a look in my files. Um, I like to get him appointed because we couldn't have a meeting because we didn't have a quorum last time. Um. I know it expired the end of last month. You wanna know how many years it's for so you can?
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh, maybe with a little luck, I can round it up quickly. Uh, documents, housing authority. Uh. Reappointments. Um.
Has, has Arthur's?
Uh, we are. Go ahead.
Has Arthur served, uh, previously, you said that is, is, he just expired?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm opening up, uh, now that's my reappointment. Okay.
That's, that was, that's fine. All we need is a number of years.
Yeah, I understand that. Um. Uh, I got the one from twenty-three. Let's see if that tells me anything.
If, if the last one was in twenty-three, it's now twenty-five.
I, I don't know if that's his.
For the period twenty-three through twenty-five, so.
Alright, so that's a two-year period. We will, uh.
Well, I, that's what he would, he was just recently appointed. I either after somebody stepped down from the commission or somebody passed away. I can't remember what was the uh, reason. I'm taking a look for it. Uh, there's no number of years there. Um. Let me look it online to see if I can find something. Uh, well, I've been housing, uh, members.
Don, while you look for that and, and ask if anybody else has, uh, is, uh, has something to say from present speak?
Okay, I've got what I need, but go ahead.
Okay. Anybody else? No hands are raised? Go ahead, Don.
I believe it's a five-year term based on my term being a five-year term and, and William Benell's being a five-year term.
And five years. And so, uh, I move that we reappoint Arthur Blakely to the Housing Authority from, what's today? Eighteenth?
Yeah.
From, uh.
Nineteen.
From August eighteenth twenty twenty-five to August eighteenth twenty thirty. While you're a second, I second. Any discussion?
Just a little bit. There's a misspelling of his name in the minutes.
Okay.
It's spelled B L A S K E Y.
Last key.
Uh, in the agenda, excuse me.
Alright. Last key.
Um, that's how I got it, so.
Okay. We will change the spelling in accordance. And if you could have Arthur come by the, uh, town office building and swear in.
Okay. I'll have him.
Alright.
She, effective tomorrow, at least sometime after tomorrow.
Yeah, it's afternoon to give, give Nicole a chance to type it up.
Okay.
Alright?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Don. Jim.
Say again. Thank you, Don.
Well, yeah, thank you, Don. Uh, Jim Marshall has hand raised. Go ahead, Jim.
Okay.
Hi guys. Thanks. Uh, Jim Marshall, Fisher Hill Road. Um, Pete, everybody, just a quick question. I'm uh, you're not there yet and I don't even know whether the Board of Bed is there yet related to a school building committee, um, and where they're at on their future school project. But I'm not entirely sure we ever formally disbanded the last school building committee. I think you might actually still have a formed committee. And I'd, I don't know how that, how that falls out, but it's, I just wanted to note it as something to check potentially before.
We, we checked it, uh, I think six Board of Selectmen meetings in a row. And it was ended, uh, the chairman said that the, based on what the chairman said, um, that the board was to disband at the, uh, conclusion of its charge and they had decided that they had a conclusion of its charge. They had written a, uh, summary and the thing was disbanded. The board was disbanded. So.
Yeah, I'm just, I just don't know if there was ever any formal action by the committee or by the Board of Selectmen to do that. Um, I just, I just suggest checking it with whatever the, whoever would need to.
No, that was, that was, that was gone over many times and it was determined that that board had dissolved.
Okay, great.
Alright.
Thanks.
Yeah. Please don't make me sit through that again.
Thanks.
Alright. Yep. Anyone else? Seeing no other hands, so I hear a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right. Okay, thank you very much, folks. And.